Thank you.
No, it doesn't do you at all. It is six o'clock. Pursue it to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 parentheses one parentheses golf. City Council will now enter an executive session for the purpose of reviewing the performance of the city manager. The executive session will last for 30 minutes ending at 6:30 with no action to follow.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor, you're extending the executive session to 6:45?
Yes, ma'am. The executive session will be extended from 6:30 to 6:45.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
...
What person you are?
I mean.
No, that. So what?
So the other. Vancouver.
Number two. Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
They need to breathe. Calling it first back to order.
Calling the meeting back to order. We will adjourn the special meeting here at six forty-six.
Thank you.
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 Thank you. Same, same mistake. You know, he may sit down, not get up. It's, it's energy.
Conservation.
Conservation thing. It is seven o'clock. If you join us, please for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hillyly. Let's see who's here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
President.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember McCoy.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferrer. Oh, and this clerk is present. That concludes the roll, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, are there any changes needed to be made to the agenda? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, council, I'd like to make a motion to remove from the agenda tonight, the policy discussion for telecommuting and the workplace violence and put, um, the telecommuting part of that on to the February, first meeting in February.
Okay.
Okay, say that one more time so everyone has it.
Remove it from the agenda tonight and put just the telecommuting portion on the first meeting in February.
You know, there's the.
That was it. So there's a motion to amend the agenda to remove the policy discussion.
Yes.
That, uh, to adding it to next agenda would be another motion.
Yes, that's correct.
To remove the policy discussion, I mean.
You can come back on the second round for that.
It's only the policy.
Just to remove it.
Yes, uh, both the weapons and the work from home.
Okay, so both of them.
Yes, the policy discussion as a whole.
Yeah.
And there is a second. We'll just explain. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none as well. Is there another?
So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, put the telecommuting portion of this on the first meeting in February.
Second.
There's a first, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none as well. Moving on. Uh, council member reports. Are there any, uh, council member reports this evening? Yes, sir.
You're Ms. Mayor, sorry. Um, council, I had the last meeting of the year for Discovery Clean Water Alliance and, um, just wanted to give you guys a little bit of update on some of the things that, that are coming, um, in the next year. We, we discussed this year's budget, this, this upcoming year's budget. Um, one of the things that, that we talked about was, um, that, that we're looking at for long-term is the, the biosolids. Um, we lost one of our, one of our farms and are losing a second one that we apply in Southwest Washington for biosolids. The biosolids are the, um, the, after the, the, the sewage goes through the treatment plant, it's what's left over and it usually gets dried out. We don't, uh, Vancouver, I think is, is the, they incinerate theirs, right? Because they take it to a different step and then, then we do, we apply ours to agricultural land. And, um, that's a big, that's a big issue and, and the, um, the amount of money that we spend getting that out and especially the stuff that we were using locally here, we only had one month to move everything. And so it was like four loads a day leaving the plant. Um, we do have a, a place that we take it to out in Click Attack County, uh, out in Centerville and they were taking about sixty percent of our biosolids. They're going to be taking about eighty percent of our biosolids now, but in the future, the challenge is, is what do we do in the future? And so some of the discussion has been around, um, you know, potentially there, there could be potential for, for the, the, the alliance to buy property, um, out in, uh, Eastern Washington, um, to, to apply this ourselves, uh, that would give us our own, um, our own ability to, to do that. Um, or, uh, I, I know right now we're talking to a, a farm in, on Alaska, which is north of here. Um, but, uh, the amount of money that we, we spend to do that is going to continue to rise. Uh, we're looking at buying our own truck to be able to haul that right now. Uh, we do a loaded day going to Click Attack County and that's probably going to have to go up a little bit because they're going to take more. So that's one of the things. The other thing that, that I thought was important that, that we need to look at as a city and maybe put this into our water bills and, uh, is there is a lot of people, there are, there are, there not, there is. There are a lot of people that use what are considered flushable wipes and they are, um, the advertising of them being flushable is true. You can flush a golf ball too if you want, but it doesn't mean that it goes through the system. And so those, I think everyone's been to the plant, you haven't yet, you'll be there, but, but everyone's been to the plant and they have these, what do they call them? Mark, uh, they're just a. There are screen that just scrubs this stuff off and there's piles of wipes that, that are sitting there because they don't biodegrade. there are screen that just scrubs this stuff off and there's piles of wipes that that are sitting there because they don't biodegrade. And so there's some, there's some legislation federally that is trying to be done on this, but let's be honest, it's not really a a big, you know, it's not really a big push from anyone. And so I think one of the things that we talked about is is putting stuff in our water bills. Um, we talked a little bit about social media, working with the district on some type of social media campaign saying, hey, these things don't flush. Um, they don't, they don't get processed um, or they don't break down. We have to process them. So that that's become more of an issue. Um, and then uh, last, just the budget, uh, just so you guys know, just to give you an idea for 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 DCWA, um, we we have about sixty-three million dollars in just repair and replacement going on this next year. So when people, when people wonder how much it costs to do sewer, um, it's a lot of money to do sewer and and we are the Discovery Clean Water Alliance, which is, which is the the ownership of the plant is uh, the the district, Hazel Dell Sewer District and the city of Battleground. That plant is supporting over half of Clark County. And that's including future growth. So all the growth that's going in in Clark County that's coming to the north is going to go back to that plant. So all Ridgefield, all the center doesn't, but but um, the majority of of Clark County, well, not the majority, over half of it though, is still um, going to go to that plant. So the future plans of that plant are important. Uh, we talked about that a lot and that will be coming up along with the comp plan updates. Because if we, if some of us were here or we lived here when Battleground wasn't uh, on a moratorium before, I think it was uh, about two thousand. We we were in a moratorium that was water, correct?
Yeah, there was both a sewer and a water. They're both around that ninety-nine, two thousand time.
So those are important things to look at as as we're going out. Nobody, nobody talks about this. I mean, you know, when we, when we run for council, sewer is never something we run on and and we think we're going to, you know, build parks and all this stuff and you don't realize the infrastructure that's needed for sewer and water. And so as we're looking at this, um, the projections, uh, what they're going to come out with the twenty twenty-five projections and what we do is going to determine the amount of money that has to be spent and when for the, for these uh, expansion of the plant and where we're going. So that'll be coming forth. Uh, I know that we're starting to work on that right now and and that'll be coming forth. But I I would like to ask um, staff if we can, we do a quarterly meeting there and it takes a couple hours and there's a lot of information that goes into that. And and I would like to ask staff to that we could possibly have the the alliance come out once or twice a year, just to kind of maybe in a study session, do a broad overview of where this money's going and what it's going to cost us. Um, and and uh, allow council to see uh, what that looks like because um, there's going to be, there's going to be a big chunk of change for us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for you, Shane.
Yeah.
Um, when I toured there, they had talked about getting some extra certification, some equipment to uh, make the biosolids garden soil and that they could sell it. Has there been any more talk of that?
They haven't said anything about that and and probably the biggest, the biggest issue is is just the quantity is like the amount of time it takes to to sell a we're 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 taking uh, forty forty-ton truckloads out and, you know, a forty-pound bag of garden stuff they.
Built in truckloads.
They, I I don't know, there, well, and and there's that, there's another issue that gets brought up with that and that's the PFOS. And and there's a lot of stuff with this. We're not sure you know, what's in it, what, and so I think that right now it's just basically going to where it's the least amount of liability for us.
Thank you.
As a percentage, what's our cost on that?
What? Well.
Twenty-five, thirty-three?
No, because because a lot of this stuff is is different things that that we wouldn't participate in. Uh, so the salmon creek, there's anything at the the treatment plant, we have what about thirty percent?
It can vary. Like, I always go with the eighty-twenty, but you know, horse veins a hundred percent ours. There's projects that are a hundred percent the district, so it varies depending on the asset and and what we're talking about, but.
I mean, pretty much everything in this was uh, was salmon, salmon uh, Creek Treatment Plant. There is one at the Ridgefield Treatment Plant that we don't participate in. Thirty-sixth Ave Pump Station, does that benefit us?
I believe it does.
And that one was a big one. We lost a generator there.
Correct.
And so that was.
I think that was in the million dollars, but there was an insurance settlement that will cover most of that.
I think, I think we're going to pay twenty-five thousand or something like that.
Yeah, it's a pretty minimal.
When we get done, so.
And then Mark, out of twenty-one thousand people, what what do we produce in sewage every day?
So in the summer, when we're not having any groundwater, we're about one, two, one, three million gallons a day. Um, during this last big storm, we were putting out four point four. Um, so about triples in the winter with.
Four and a half million a day?
Yeah.
And I think that goes back to, it's a, it's the stuff that's getting into the sewer.
Yeah, the summer's the best time to tell what you're really actually putting in from a sewer perspective. The winter tells you what your I and I issues are and and that's where you see the difference.
But we're paying for rainwater to be uh, treated.
Correct.
Seventy-five percent more this last storm.
What would you think would take to cut that in half?
A lot. So there's a lot of methods for addressing that issue. Um, there's pipelining, there's replacing laterals, there's all those sorts of things. Um, I have a good idea of of places where we have issues, but um, there's some stuff to talk about and how to address it.
Perfect. That you, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, had a salmon recovery board meeting. Uh, Senator Wilson's the new legislative representative. Um, and I see your sixty million dollars and I raise it up to ten million. Uh, that's what it costs for the salmon transportation for one of the dams on the Lewis. Now, that's not our power company, but it gives you an indication of the pricing pressure on the water side, which then we pay for again when it becomes sewer. So uh, that was quite eye-opening there. I mean, since there's no fish ladders there, they're capturing fish and trucking them both ways. Uh, they've offered tours if we ever want to go see it, might be kind of cool, but uh, if they truck the mature ones up and then then they capture the smolts when they come down and they truck them down as well. So it, and the run is thriving. It's one of the better ones uh, that uh, is making a comeback, but.
To to the other side of the dam or?
Correct. Yeah, they have different.
Not not to the ocean. I mean, they're not, it's not, it's not a free ride.
The golf course might, they have, they own some land and they have a, they they send them right down the chute. So.
It ain't easy being a salmon smoke, is it?
No, no, no. And then uh, have a bunch of other events, but I'd I'd like to leave those towards council communications if that's okay.
You know, anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to presentations. It looks like our friends from uh, the Vancouver Chamber here, Ms. Urban.
Yes, uh, the folks from Greater Vancouver Chamber of Commerce are here, so I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Mr. McDon and we'll have a presentation real quick.
I have no idea. Welcome, John. Pleasure to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Um, my name's John McDonough. I have the uh, distinct pleasure of being the president and CEO of the Greater Vancouver Chamber. And uh, we brought with us a few people. Uh, tonight we have a couple of our members, uh, Sue Neal. I think most of you are familiar with Sue at the uh, Battleground Healthcare and Amy Price, uh, who used to manage the Riverview branch up here and now for Washington Trust is the VP of Small Business Banking and also responsible for Battleground. Additionally, we've brought a number of our uh, staff members uh, at the GVC. Uh, we have uh, Amy Tanska, Heather Rowley, Katie Atkinson and Sherry Cloke.
Pleasure to have you.
And I'll introduce you to our uh, vice president, uh, who's going to wrap up the presentation this morning, or this evening, excuse me. So we really appreciate the opportunity to share with council a little bit about the Greater Vancouver Chamber and why we believe in investment by the city of Battleground uh, and the GVC is is not only good for the city, but for the business community here. GVC has a distinct fortune of being a business-to-business Chamber of Commerce. And we're a regional chamber. So while Vancouver is in our name, uh, we uh, covered in the entirety of Clark County as well as having membership in Calix County and it's mainly now. And uh, do our best to serve those. We also have some contracts uh, that give us uh, some exposure in uh, Waukaiakum County as well, so. Uh, so the difference between a business-to-business Chamber of Commerce and maybe other chambers that you're familiar with is the GVC does not produce community events or parades. Uh, we're not responsible for tourism uh, in the market and we're not focused on recruiting businesses uh, to the market. Rather, GVC is focused on the existing business community and working to assure those employers are sustainable, vital and continue to grow and create jobs, all while adding valuable amenities to the employees and residents of southwest Washington. We believe our regional nature is also an asset to Battleground. As we have worked with the businesses in Battleground over the last uh, number of years, we've consistently heard from the businesses that up to seventy percent of their customers come from outside the city. Uh, our regional voice can help sustain that business coming to Battleground as the market continues to grow. The GVC, it does work. The GVC mission is to be inclusive, be inclusive and innovative provider of programming and resources, enabling businesses to thrive and create community vitality. We accomplish this through intention-driven programming, organizational growth and vitality and community engagement and education. The, who we are, uh, the GVC is uh, ten members strong, uh, plus our chief interaction officer, which is Moka Bean there in the lower right. And uh, just a side note, about half of our staff are residents of Battleground School District. So we have a pretty strong bond bond to Battleground uh, in our staff. A five oh one C six organization. Our twenty-one-member Board of Directors is made up of a cross-section of employers from the region, including uh, Steve and Amy from uh, Tradesman Electric here in Battleground. In fact, our board and committees have strong representation from Battleground with reps from a host of companies who either have businesses in Battleground or have branch locations. And let's not forget all those members whose company employs people who have their residence in and around Battleground. You can see from this slide, the GVC pillar pillars focusing on advocacy, inclusion, leadership, community, business resources and education. Advocacy is for the businesses in the region uh, and being inclusive uh, for businesses of all sizes and from all sectors and offering everything from professional services to Thai food or backyard uh, bouncy houses. Leadership is another area of focus for us, understanding that leadership is key in business as well as in the community. And building a sense of community among the business owners and leaders is another area of focus for the GVC. One of the things that we have found is that by bringing the community together, we create supply chain connections uh, for people right in our community as opposed to them having to rely on uh, supply chains from across the country or across the world. Um, so now, uh, what I'd like to do is introduce to you, uh, Janet Knefsky. Janet's our VP of uh, Membership and Operations and she's going to review for you a little bit about her program.
Hi, good evening. Again, my name is Janet Knefsky with the Greater Vancouver Chamber. Um, what I wanted to do now, uh, you've you've been given the background. I want to go into a little bit about what programs that we offer. I'm going to give you just a little bit because we have twenty or thirty programs that we have at the Greater Vancouver Chamber for business and businesses in our community. Um, but if there's anything that we can plant, I want to, I want to make sure that we leave something for you to ask questions on later or when we return back to our offices and it might appear when a company approaches um, your offices for assistance. So um, I wanted to bring up in uh, the CARES Act, when we were looking at companies that were struggling with the COVID pandemics and what was happening, uh, we were successful in being able to secure three hundred and twelve thousand um, dollars for those companies that had brick and mortar businesses in the city of Battleground. So uh, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars went to to those that were retail, uh, restaurant or childcare providers with brick and mortars that were the hardest hit in our, in our community um, in twenty twenty-one. So that was for us a huge win to be able to secure that. Um, we have a newsletter and I think I've signed up all of you for the newsletter. So if you don't receive it, it comes out on Tuesdays. Um, and if if you don't, um, check your spam filters, but I'll make sure that we put everybody on there. But your, um, the newsletter goes out to approximately fifteen thousand professionals in the community, letting them know what's happening, um, what their community is up to. If there's any opportunities, volunteer opportunities. Um, I had one from a week or two ago where we highlight Battleground information, any city council positions or any committee positions that you might have or anything that you need to go out to the community um, in a timely matter. So we are a great resource for that and we do get a lot of visibility. So that goes um, not only to the inboxes of everybody, but also on social media on three different platforms. And there's quite a bit of um, open rates that go along with that. Um, different programs at events, um, just as an example, over the last twelve, twenty-four months, we've been doing a considerable amount of events up here in Battleground and the community and the businesses have been great hosts for it. So here we have um, a location that is probably all familiar with each of you, the Michelangelo. But this is where we try and get, um, this is a business after hours. We've hosted a couple of these up here. This is where we can get the eyes and ears of a couple hundred different individuals to identify new places in our community and we wanted to showcase Battleground. And so we had around um, approximately two hundred people that attended this reception on a Tuesday afternoon. But businesses attending from all over southwest Washington, it was a great um, opportunity to highlight. And then we also had one at the Battleground City Center, um, just recently highlighting our business and leadership awards that where we um, recognize individuals and companies all throughout the region, including um, statespeople that might be doing exceptional work in the community, just like Battleground. Um, and then one thing that we do have here, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this, but the Chamber a couple of years ago launched Spend It Local. This is a co- uh, community currency program, just rebranded this last couple of weeks from Grow the Three Six O. But this is a gift certificate program that answers the question, why are we not spending our money locally? Giving corporations, businesses and even cities the opportunity to purchase and gift um, local dollars instead of those going to big box stores, which we all know and love. We do purchase from them from time to time, but we needed to have a vehicle in order to get people to spend local money in the local um, in the local uh, restaurants and retail and service providers. And this program has been phenomenal and do, and phenomenal in doing so. Um, we have approximately seven, seventy-five different merchants that are on it. So if you gift each other a gift certificate, you can get, you can go and spend it at coffee shops, at retail. You can get your oil changed, um, Hozley Automotive. We've got a number of places that allow residents um, who have been gifted or who would like to gift um, an opportunity to spend at local, including Battleground locations. Um, over two hundred thousand dollars has been spent so far and we have around seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars currently in circulation. So those are dollars sitting in people's pockets waiting to spend them and that's where the Chamber comes in to help highlight those um, restaurants and retail. Usually those organizations do not have very good marketing, don't have the capacity, the manpower, um, oftentimes the money to do that. And that's where the Vancouver Chamber comes in. We can make sure that there's um, quite a bit of advertising that goes behind it to help augment. So um, that is something that's available to our membership as well and we pay one hundred percent of those fees. So we um, absorb the credit card processing fees. We um, do the marketing for it and every dollar spent in that restaurant, in that um, establishment, a hundred percent goes back to that merchant and we're pretty proud of that. We absorb the remainder of that. And then we also have a worksafe program. I bring this up because we do have a couple of companies up here in Battleground that take advantage of an L and I program um, called the retrospective retail, uh, retrospective manufacturing program. Those are run through organizations throughout the state. And right now, the purview is um, for the, this region in southwest Washington to have the manufacturing. So we have a manufacturing program for uh, manufacturers who can get their L and I money back, which is um, unheard of in the state of Washington, but we're pretty lucky in the, in the United States where the state of Washington is one of two, if not now the only one um, uh, state in in the United States that can get L and I money back after you pay workers' comp. There's a a program to make you recoup that. And so the Chamber, um, the Greater Vancouver Chamber and L and I both. There's a program to make you recoup that. And so the Chamber, the Greater Vancouver Chamber and L and I both come together and we reimburse on a yearly basis approximately one point one, one point two million dollars back to those companies. And in the last two years, one of our manufacturers here in Battleground has received forty-five thousand, a little a little more than forty-five thousand dollars of their L and I money back to their company to further promote their their company, their safety standards. Some put it right back into their employee culture and thanking their employees for having a safe work environment. So a really great program that we're pretty lucky to have. And I think we're about to expand that program to another another retail sector as well. And then one of the things that we're most proud of and what seed I'd like to plant with this, the Chamber during the pandemic recognized the need for companies to get services on how to grow their business, how to start their business, and how to fix their business, especially at early young stages when money is not plethora for them to be able to spend on it. So we formed a business pod program, Pathways to Opportunity and Development. We currently have two hundred and thirty-seven companies who have gone through this program to start their business, grow their business. And we're currently, we just finished up, and there's twenty companies who have taken advantage of this in the city of Battleground, another fifteen or so throughout Brush Prairie. And we have another twelve that have just signed on in the last month or so to get business assistance that hopefully will stay here in Battleground, grow their business, and understand their supply chain, how to track their inventory, how to formally how to legally form, how to reach their customers. So it's an incubator that we started a couple of years ago, and it's just seen phenomenal success and being taken advantage of by North County companies. So encourage you, if you'd like more information on that, that's one that's really going to excel a lot of the business and the business acumen that our that our companies, our small companies have here in Battleground. So some of the offerings, I'll leave you with the presentation afterward. But we do put companies into cohorts because there's something about cohorts that allows us to learn together, ask questions together, and grow together. So we have several cohorts that we put together, almost like a chamber, where we put people together and being able to cohort together. So we have a wellness cohort. We have food court, food cart cohorts, those that are learning how to form and then how to grow together. And we're pretty proud of those cohorts building community. And then your Chamber is also the Workforce Development Office in the state, in the in the southern Southwest Washington. We've partnered with our universities, Clark College, W S U, Lower Columbia, and our K twelve. And we have a workforce portal where we're trying to match internships, apprenticeships, and externships in order to grow the region and our workforce capacity here. So we have a person dedicated to that, Amy Tanska, who runs a workforce portal for our region and then can also grab those students that are going away to college in Eastern, Eastern Washington, maybe, and bring them back here and hopefully join our workforce here after they're done with education. One thing that we did put together was a National Civics Be, and I think you guys all welcomed a young group of individuals that were looking forward to start their their civic pride in their city. And this has been phenomenal, and this has just opened up again. And so we encourage you, if you would like to get involved in that, the civics be helping kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade learn how to put civics in their everyday life. It's just been phenomenal. And we're looking at partnering again with our city governments all around the Southwest Washington region for that. That is a picture of it. I will leave you with that. That was a good, a good day. There's some Battleground students who were there who made the top twenty, which is incredible. And applications just opened up for our civic applications. And our first couple came from Battleground, which we're really excited about. So a couple coming from Chief, and I think we have a couple homeschool as well. So it's reaching a lot of a lot of the community, and they're pretty excited about it.
The little girl on the right, I believe, was third, if I remember correctly.
Came in third. They they were, they were ecstatic. And so we see them going on, and the winners of that ended up going on to Seattle, but they, the winner of the program ended up just getting back from Washington DC on his first DC fly-in with A W B, the Association of Washington Businesses. So I know that they diaried his his journey there, and we can't wait to share it with you. It's it's incredible, but it is making an impact, and it is showing this, our youth, that there's opportunities, especially as our education system has wiped civics from a lot of the education. So this has been a great program. And then if you don't know about Lemonade Day, I encourage you to get involved. This is our Lemonade Day program that teaches kids youth entrepreneurship. All of these kids, three hundred here, three hundred and twenty-five, all learned the year before how to build their own business, actual business. And then we took up the entire park of Esther Short Park and and had Lemonade Day. So they sold business goods and they, we had around forty-five, maybe fifty thousand dollars in total sales that these kids put in their pocket or cash registers and and are hopefully coming back to join us. So this is the second year. We'll be embarking on our third year, and if we'll be sending out an invitation because this this event is incredible for our business community with a wide number of of those coming from Battleground, Brush Prairie, and the Ridgefield area. So pretty exciting. And those, the little looks of some of their their products, and I'll leave the presentation with you so you can ask questions if you have questions now, or we left our information up here so you can follow us or reach us directly.
Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned working with a lot of businesses here. Do they have to be a member to benefit from the programs?
That's a good question. Yeah. So we do have a wide range of services that are available for our membership, including the Grow the Three Six, or the Spend It Local. But no, we opened up during the pandemic, actually, when we rebranded and we looked at our programming, and we opened it up to every company. So those companies that were going through Business Pod, the three hundred companies or so, none of them are Chamber members. We don't expect them to be Chamber members until they grow form community, and then most of them are reaching out for membership once they get into their growth stages. We also have a nonprofit pod. So we have around ten nonprofits in Battleground that are part of Chamber membership, but we open up the whole pathway program to nonprofits as well. Back in April of, April of this year, the Greater Vancouver Chamber absorbed the Nonprofit Network of Southwest Washington, which was for twenty-two years or so, the arm for all nonprofits in Southwest Washington. So when we took that on, we knew that there was going to be a lot of benefit towards Chamber members, but that there were a lot of very small nonprofits that needed access to services, access to help, access to donors and fundraising ability, and those are open. We have, I would say around two hundred, one hundred ninety to two hundred companies that are taking advantage of that nonprofit pod program that are not part of Chamber membership yet. But a lot of programs available.
How many members?
How do we? We have about twelve hundred members in the Greater Vancouver Chamber. We have on top of that, another two hundred and fifty, three hundred that are going through the Business Pod programs, another two hundred that are nonprofits, and then we work with maybe four or five hundred in another capacity on our government advocacy and other programs that we do.
And then on the Spend It Local, where does one purchase those?
So you can go to the Greater Vancouver Chamber webpage or spenditlocal.co, and we'll send out some information to you. I know that, for example, the city of Vancouver purchases it now for rewards for their health and wellness programs instead of buying gift certificates that they used to purchase, which people do like for the big box stores. They've they recently changed that. So what we're doing, especially with our city of, if you're familiar with Main Street downtown Vancouver, going through the forty-year renovation, we're going through the Main Street Promise Program, which which is going to tear up Main Street for a good couple of years. The Chamber is working with all the companies and corporations in the in the buildings above retail level. And we're working with them to purchase, grow the, or spend at local gift certificates to then infuse and support during the construction period, which is one of the things that eventually we'll want to talk to the city here about as you're going through growth and you're going through construction. There are great ways for the Chamber to be able to come in and work alongside you to help make sure that those companies who are on the retail level are going to be impacted by the construction, that they don't have to see their customer base decrease. We have ways that we can promote and get the business community out there to support even when construction is blocking part of their pathway out front.
And then on the WorkSafe, can municipalities participate in that?
The WorkSafe program, there is a WorkSafe program specifically for municipalities, so we can introduce you. We can introduce them to to your right, but I would definitely, it's something that's very unique. And when you're talking about L and I, you guys get it. You're talking about L and I, you're talking about regulatory, you're talking about safety. Nobody wants to hear that. So we try and work with L and I. We have a contract with L and I to bring down the government talk and be able to speak to our businesses and our nonprofits on how to build a safety, a safe community. And one of those is working on our on our manufacturing program, and it's it's incredible. And one of the things that we want to do, I know there's around eighty-five different manufacturers here in Battleground. We'd love to get more information out and hold a listening session so that more can participate.
And then a couple of last things here. Counsel, let's, I I assume, John, you didn't come all the way out here just to have us listen. I assume you're interested in someone joining. So Counsel, if we may, let me, let me close for you, John. If we may, can we authorize this, the city manager to speak with the Greater Vancouver Chamber to set up a relationship for the city of Battleground? Does anyone have any heartburn with that? I don't hear any. We'll take that as a yes. So we'll take that as seven yeses. Thank you for coming. And I would say, John, I've known you for years. I would have been more wild if Mr. Bean or Ms. Bean, whichever one it is, had come. Ms. Bean? If Ms. Bean had come, it would have been quite a better presentation on your behalf.
I think he would have liked to have been here better than sitting at home right now.
Does Ms. Bean belong to you?
Yeah, Mr. Moka Bean belongs, yeah, Mr. Bean belongs to me, and he is a Chamber dog. So you can find him in the Greater Vancouver Chamber office five days a week.
Well, we'll, we'll look him up on online and see his picture. Thank you for coming. Again, it's a pleasure to have you. Is there anything you'd like to finish with, John? Wonderful. Yeah. Anything from you, Ms. Erdman, on that?
Nope. I think we'll we'll start discussions and see if we can get together a membership.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do have one more presentation before you move on.
Okay. For years, actually twelve years, there was a Chamber here for some years. I was a member of it on behalf of the city up until probably three or four years ago, when when it just got overrun. And so I am glad to see the folks coming back out and making an effort to talk to our folks. It is a benefit as far as I can see. I had a wonderful time and I, in those eight years. And I met a lot of nice people, and we made some connections. There's a business here, the the Lineman School came from a conversation I had with a gentleman who was there. I'm not sure if he was a stockbroker or if he's financial advisor, but just on passing, he's like, I know some people out on the Oregon coast who want to move inland. Can you help them? And so they are here today and have a very wonderful building just down the street from us. So another presentation. Yes, ma'am. Please.
City staff and the city council, I would like to thank Mayor Johnson for his years of service.
Oh, my.
This is our last regularly scheduled meeting and his last meeting. We wanted to present you with a plaque for your service. So Mr. Johnson has served twelve consecutive years on council.
Never missed a day.
Never missed a day, three consecutive terms. He was our deputy mayor from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, our mayor from sixteen to seventeen, and again from twenty-two to twenty-three. So here is a plaque for you. You're welcome. Also, a gavel with your years of mayor.
Wow, I see that works on my wife.
Yeah, that's not for hurting, that's not for hurting. And a card from our executive team. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I appreciate it as well. And at the end of the meeting, I have a small presentation as well.
I'm not real sure my wife will appreciate the gavel, but we'll just let it ride. She took it away. Well, she took it away forty-two years ago. Citizens Communication, if there's anyone in the audience wishes to address the council, you're more than welcome at this time. I do have some forms here. If you haven't filled out a form, they're to my left, your right. Please fill one out, give to Ms. Leely. You're more than welcome. We'll start with Mr. Sanchez. It's always a pleasure to see you, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Again, I'm here to advocate for the Magnolia Square Senior Apartments and I guess for people around Twentieth Street. The last time I was here, you gave me some information of of things that were in the works. A few weeks after I attended that meeting, I saw some people with flipboards in those grass there, looked like they were measuring or doing something. But since then, I've seen nothing take place. So I would like you to inform me so I could take it back to the Commission of Aging. They've asked me to inform them of of an update on it. So if you could inform me what's going on, what timelines you have. If I'm correct, the sidewalk will be put in this next year. And also a, see if I get it right this time, pedestrian crossing light.
Well, we'll let Mr. McCoy, who's who's versed on that. Because since you're here, Mr. Sanchez, and you are a regular and a friend of ours, please, Mr. McCoy, if you would, share with him what you know of the plan on twenty.
Well, I believe our engineer would be a much better. I can, I can tell you that, yes, it's been, it's been a goal of mine to do the same thing. I believe now we're looking at a a pathway. And yeah, you saw some stakes out there. I believe that was ecology. It was also archaeology survey out there. It's currently in design. It's not at sixty percent yet, but should be shortly, if not already there. And then at that point, it will go to Department of Ecology. And that is what I'm worried about. At that point, then we, I I may need your cell phone number, and then we may have to go up to Olympia. But because it's in wetlands, the permitting process has changed. We need to get their blessing. And Mr. Hersick is well aware of my enthusiasm for the project and keeps me informed quite well on that. So.
So we are at the mercy of the Department of Ecology, not the friendliest people in the state. And so once they come back with some sort of a finding, then at that point, we will do what they require, and then we should be able to move forward. But again, everything is left up to them. And whether that happens in three months or whether that happens in thirteen months, that too is left up to them. So we're, we're at their mercy on this project. The the money is there. The funds are there. The the blessing is needed.
Right. Okay.
That's where we are.
Okay. And Troy, I will send you my phone number. Okay. Thank you very much.
Always a pleasure, sir.
Did we end up putting the? Did we put the, I can't remember what it's called, but the new crosswalks, the thermal?
Plastic.
Yeah. Did we put that down yet over there? There is Facebook posts about them doing something over there, and people thought they were going to restripe the crosswalk that's gone. Was that?
I'll let Mark take that one, but.
I think it happened. I know I checked on that probably a month ago, and it was underwind. So I, off the top of my head, I haven't been over there, so I'm not sure, but I believe so.
Forget when I drive through.
I know. I I drive through there and I forgot to look, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Jared. Okay, come on up. Pleasure to have you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So my name is Amber Martinell, and this is my partner, James Jarrett, and we live on Southwest Eleventh Street, here off of Twentieth. And I have written you all an email before this, so you should have that. We're here today to bring to the forefront what we believe is a failed system that causes entrapment, harassment, and supports discrimination based on vehicular age. I have been the recipient of complaints about my RV as well as RVs of visiting relatives who stop for a night or two to visit me. To give you some background, I have lived in Battleground in my home for thirteen years. I have a good job. I pay my way. I pay my taxes. I pay my insurance, and I get involved in the community in various ways. I, due to time constraint, I'm not going to read my whole speech to you, but I did circle the part that I'm hoping you will take the time to read later. But the points of information is the areas RVs, oh, can you turn my alarm off? That is, I'm so sorry. The area RVs were parked on the street for a few days and were never lived in while we're here. The area RVs were parked on the street for a few days and were never lived in while we're here, that, while they were here. The RV owners were out of town family who had come to see my family and regroup before traveling on. My family does not own nine cars. We own five cars and they are all used as commuter vehicles for work. So I should back up just a little bit to let you know that this all started with a complaint in the beginning of November where somebody had said that there was a single family residence that had nine vehicles and two RVs that people were living in. None of that was true. The only thing that even was true was there's an RV that's parked in my, my, in my driveway that fits in there, doesn't intersect with any of the crosswalks or anything like that. And my sister was there with her RV for two days. And in that time, we had these complaints. And during that time, it's continued to the point where I feel like I am being seriously harassed. I mean, we have like six different, six different things that have happened in one month's time, and I've been there for 13 years. So during the same time, my family has gone through some great tragedies. And so my, my want to be able to try to get more of the community to help me with this is not really fruition in time to be here for this meeting. So specifically, what I'm asking your council to request is that you amend the current code to allow small RV trailers and other recreational vehicles to be parked and stored at your primary residence as long as the following conditions are met. If it's in your driveway, does not block sidewalks or street entrances, it is tagged, registered, licensed, and operable. I would like you guys to supply a system that visitors in RVs can submit to inform the city of any vacationers staying at your residence and the dates who will be there. So that way, our friends aren't there for one night and they have to get a warning from parking enforcement. Define storage. How many days a week do I need to drive my vehicle so that it is not considered storage rather than a commuter as I drive my vehicle most weekends? And I would like you to amend the complaint-driven enforcement to a city enforcement of all infractions and for citizens to have to identify themselves when submitting complaints. This way, the city can have a way to protect all of the Battleground citizens and not just the ones that are complaining. Right now, in my community, there are a lot of complaints being filed and we suspect it is a single neighbor doing all of the reporting. We would like you to initiate a system of chalking tires or roads to verify the infraction or offer evidence issuing warnings to form a baseline based on anonymous complaints that are fraudulent so that we have no recourse when we are fined. It is all overreaching and unfair and provides no way to ensure the citizens are not being victimized and harassed by our neighbors. We'd like to enable a system that code enforcement work in tandem with parking enforcement so they know who has already been warned and what the resident is doing about it. Also enabling parking enforcement with access to police reports. So basically, that is what I'm asking you today. But in a nutshell, the things that have happened were started with that first complaint. And then it quickly became, we're going to, my son's car was broken into and his license plate was stolen and we made a police report. And then the next thing I know, we're getting a warning about his car on the street, needs to move every 72 hours. He works six days a week. He drives his car every single day to Vancouver to go to work. So it was never there, 72 hours, and the license plate missing. There's a police report of him showing that it was stolen and he's working on getting it. And it just seems like it's over and over these things, and there's no way that I can say, Mr. Officer, so and so is harassing me and here is my proof because I, you guys do it anonymously. So that's my issue.
Yes, ma'am. And we understand your issue. We've, in the past, it has been very lax. Today's cool, if you will, bad, bad form of word there. But we, we asked, we've ordered the city to tighten up. Because as you go through neighborhoods, there, there are problems. We do it anonymously for a reason, because the people across the street from you may not be very friendly. And we don't want anyone having some sort of problem with their neighbors. So what, what's happening and what you've realized and what a lot of people have realized is that since neighbors can't speak to neighbors, that neighbors use us as an arbitration service. The code guy, the parking person, they become, they become the conduit between you. So we've all, we've got your, your email. You will need to follow up with us because there's, there's a chance that, that we're going to probably stay as we are. But it is incumbent upon you to, to keep at it. Because times will change, but there, there are problems across the city and we're trying to square those away.
And I understand that. I do understand that, but it's just the other issue is, like you said, that if the neighbor doesn't want to communicate with me and they don't want you to know who it is that they're, because I don't need to know who it is. What I want to know is, I want you to know who it is.
But if they tell us who they are, it's an open public record.
Even if they make a police report.
Even then, the neighbor across the street, you in this, in this example, could go and pull that. Yes. And you would see Philip Johnson, whatever, the neighbor.
Well, I certainly understand the, the problem with that, but I just am on the other side of that and it feels, I feel like at this point, I had a neighbor the other night come out and yell at my daughter. She pulled up after work at 11 o'clock at night. She's done this, she's worked the same job since 2020, same thing. She pulled up like she always does, wanted to take her 15 minutes to 20 minutes to sit in her car and relax before she came into the house. She needs that time to unwind. My neighbor comes out screaming with her flashlight and scared the bejesus out of my daughter. And we all at this point don't even want to go home. I mean, it's horrible. It makes us feel like it's not our respite. It isn't a place that I can relax.
It, it is a tough situation and, and we hear you.
Okay. And then, but at the point, even if you take away the other RV that was just visiting, that's not even an issue anymore, and you take away the car issues, we still have our RV that we drive every single weekend. And so my point is, when does it become storage versus driving? Because I'm literally driving it. And then one last thing I want to say about that is, when I called about storage for it, if my vehicle had been newer in the last 20 years or greater, newer, then my, I could find storage for simply $100 a month, which that wouldn't be a problem for me. I could probably make that happen. But because my vehicle's a 79 that runs beautifully, has a brand new engine, runs great, but it's a 79. So now guess what? That's $400 a month.
Yeah, they're scared of it.
And I'm not going to pay $400.
Scared that you're going to pull it in there and then walk away.
Right.
And so I, we can't make any changes on that. That's their business.
Understandable as well, but really, we're just, really, we're just trying to find an answer. How long do we have as stored, you know, between storage and commute?
Yeah. Well, we'll get you a card from the city. And you can sit down, have a little talk to talk, if you will, and, and let's see if we can find a happy.
Okay, let's do that. That'd be great.
I mean, no guarantees, no guarantees. Okay. Yes, sir.
I, I don't want to advertise for a business, but if you contact me later, I think I know of a, a lot that I don't believe they take in age. So if, if you want to drop me an email.
Okay, perfect.
Pass that on.
Okay, perfect. And where do I get the card? Thank you.
Right, right to your left.
Thank you again.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Moving on, is there anyone else before we move on? Seeing no one, we'll move to the consent agenda. I would ask that item number D be removed for a, a further discussion. If I could have a second on that?
About we do it this way, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve consent agenda, A, B, C, and E. With D pulled for further discussion.
Perfect. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none as well. We'll go ahead and talk about the, Mark, if you would, can you tell us what that entails? The street preservation program, Millenfield?
I heard E, okay.
So are we talking about E?
I, I misheard. I, I made that motion incorrectly.
Well, I'm reading D on mine.
Yeah, it's E.
It's E on.
Al. Al, I'm reading D.
You get to talk about payroll.
Well, I'm not.
I don't know what you.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure about.
Of our, this one.
It got cut off?
Yes.
We, well, we've already approved it now, but you can, we need to approve D now.
Well, let's go back and approve D.
Approve consent item B.
Thank you. Say, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. We don't want to leave that out.
I'm happy to answer the question.
And then let's talk about E.
So E is the TIB grant that we applied for. So it will cover Southeast Eaton Boulevard from Grace Avenue East to City Limits. It's Millenfield like we've done on several other streets, including the other sections of Eaton there. TIB will be funding 80% of the project up to just under $500,000. That will get done this summer with all of our other street work.
Well, I just wanted that out on the record. And that's picked up the summer, you said?
Yeah.
And it's, it's from what street to what street?
It's Eaton from Grace to East City Limits. Does that hit the threshold where we have to do new ramps? Yes. Thankfully, there's a limited number on that stretch, so there's not a shot, but yes.
Okay, so there, there is.
Well, people get, I think there's only a couple.
Two or three or four.
Yeah, it's, it's like.
The Village and.
And, yeah, I think, I think possibly where it comes out on Commerce.
The Edibles plant?
At the Edibles. My guess is those will be legal. I think they're new enough, but we'll, we check everything before we do it. So yeah, worst case, it's a couple.
Any other discussions for A?
No.
Then may I have a?
It's already.
Oh, it's already been approved. That's right. Yeah. Then we'll, we'll just move on. Moving on to the ordinance 2023-18- dash, which is the 2024 budget. Ms. Erdman.
Good evening, Council.
Ms. Lowery.
Before you have our 2024 operating capital improvement budget, ordinance 2023-18. If there's any questions council has, staff recommends adopting, but we're open for discussion and questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Rosier.
Yeah, I just have a question. If I didn't like something in the budget and I decided to vote against it, would I essentially be voting against like hiring police officers and things like that? You know, just for one item?
Okay, so there is no line item veto in the budget. It's an either, it's an.
Right, but I mean, like, if I say no, I'm saying no to everything.
Everything.
Right.
It, it's an all or nothing deal. Okey dokey. Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir.
So for me, then, like, is there, is there two things. First, Miss Deputy Mayor, is there something that you want removed?
No, I was just wondering if that's.
Okay, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2023-18 as presented.
Second.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Discussion, I do see you, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to make a quick comment on this budget. First of all, preparing, thank you and Megan for preparing this budget. I will be voting in favor of the budget, number one, it will require you to pass a budget by state law. We will be meeting that requirement in our official capacity, as elected official. But secondly, perhaps more importantly, the city has never been in as good financial shape as we are right now. As long as I, I'm counting, as long as I lived, it's roughly about six years old. You know, I remember having conversations with Mr. Gantley, late Mr. Gantley. They went through some troubles back around, but we have never been in a good financial shape as we are right now. Appreciate being your staff for navigating that ship, but I do think that you, your staff presence about it. But I think this is a very physically responsible budget.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, Ms. Leely, if you will, if you read the budget, if you'll read the title.
An ordinance adopting the 2024 budget for the city of Battleground, Washington, and providing for effective date thereof.
Thank you. There's been a first and a second. Ms. Leely, if you'll just call out by, by member, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRozier?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember McCoy?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Looks like that rolled through. We're, we're good to go with 13 days to spare.
Thank you.
Look, look at us.
Look at us, yeah.
We'll move on. Since we removed the policy discussion, we'll remove, we'll move on to administrative reports. Ms. Erdman.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Tonight for administrative reports, I wanted to go through Speed Zone, Schools, Speed Zone Emphasis Program that PD is putting into place. So the goals for the program are to reduce overall speeds in school zones throughout the city, improve compliance with all traffic laws in school zones throughout the city, and we'll be utilizing our patrol, SROs, detectives, and traffic officers to enforce traffic laws in school zones. This is very helpful coming off of the heels of the local road safety plan and the data that was compiled by our Public Works Department. I identified zones with highest percentages overall for speed. Our, our plan is to intentionally focus enforcement in those specific zones so we can measure success in those specific areas. Once enforcement is consistent, a change to the enforcement location will be expected. Based on the current data, our top priority, first priority area is going to be Daybreak School and Northwest 239th Street and Northwest 20th Avenue. The second priority will be Battleground High School off of West Main Street. And our third priority is Maple Grove Area, so Southwest Eaton and Southwest Scotten Boulevard. The emphasis plan is to have patrol officers assigned to school zone enforcement at least once per day, once per school day, unless they have another call for service. SROs will engage in proactive school zone enforcement at least two mornings and two afternoons whenever possible. Detective's unit will work two school zone emphasis a month as a group whenever possible. And our traffic officers once assigned will be dedicated to school zone enforcement during school zone hours unless they have another emergency call for service. Just a heads up on that, our first traffic officer is in the middle of transition right now. So as we go from year to year and they, they bid their new shifts, it takes a while to transition the officers off of one shift and onto the other. They're in the middle of that transition period. That will all be finalized by January 15th. So the traffic officer will be in full swing by January 15th, if not a little bit of time before that. The second traffic officer, we're estimating hopefully to come on around January 17th, between January 17th and February 1st, is we still have quite a few of our new officers in the training program through the FTO and a lot of those detective unit. A lot of the detectives have been pulled off to kind of help with those FTO programs. So we need to make sure that our patrol staffs are fully operational before we assign that secondary traffic unit. We also have the secondary SRO to assign. So we'll be assigning the SRO, the second SRO, as soon as school starts back in January. And then directly behind that will be that second traffic officer position. So just a quick heads up there. On the reporting side, activity data generated by the above officers will be collected monthly and will be included in the monthly report. And then I've talked with Mark and our plan is to continue to collect the Speed Zone data for the schools. So we are going to do 30-day emphasis. We did start the school zone emphasis at Daybreak. Their first enforcement was on November 28th and they've done one each week through December, realizing that we kind of cut ourselves short with the month of December because school's been out and will continue to be out through the end of the month. So we'll continue to focus through January on the first priority area of Daybreak. So they'll be coming back after school comes back in January and focus in that area. Our plan is to, we have the data that we captured prior to the emphasis being done. Once they get, a week before they're done with their emphasis, we're going to lay the, the park or the speed strips back out there so we can get a week's worth of data while they're currently conducting the emphasis. And then we're going to leave them out there for a week or two after they're done. So we can see if there's a influx in, or a transition in the speeds. And then the officers will then move to the second priority location, which will be on Main Street. We'll continue to monitor speeds in that area and then we'll do the same thing as we work through the process. The expectations are that the emphasis officers are expected to contact at least four violators per hour. Patrol officers are expected to complete three traffic stops per shift. And overall speeds and average speeds are expected to come down in those focused school zone areas. I think that's the majority of the highlights I wanted to make. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And we'll pick this up again once school is back in session in, in January.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So I do have a question. Are we able to have social, post this on social media? Like how many people were stopped and, you know, just general information? Like how many people were stopped and, you know, just general information?
We can do general statistics on social media.
You know, just so people see that we're doing it too, and that changes behavior as well. It's like when they do the, the signs that say DUI patrol's on now, they want you to not drink and drive, right? So I think if we put on our Facebook that maybe we'd deter people from doing that, right?
I hope.
I don't know, and plus, I mean, it'd be kind of interesting to see.
Yes.
Ms. Erdman, can you read, what did you say about the detectives? Will you read what you said there?
Oh, some of our detectives are doing FTO training right now. So one of the things, and I probably, I think I misspoke on that a little bit, but they, they are kind of being pulled off to do the FTO. So once those officers are out with their actual patrol shifts, they'll be back and will have more people being able to do those emphasis at once when they do the two times a month.
Okay, because, because that was my concern is who's, who's making that call that, that they, you know, I, I think you said two times a month? If, if available or something like that. And, and, and so that, that's a concern for me. The other thing that, that I think is, is a concern, and I, school zones, if we're doing school zone emphasis, if we're doing speed emphasis, if we're doing seatbelt emphasis, if we're doing DUI emphasis, I've never been on a DUI emphasis yet, and I've been on a lot. That we've pulled someone over that blew over a point oh eight, and we said, you don't have any DUIs on your record. This is the first time you've ever been pulled over. You're close to home. We're going to go ahead and let you go tonight and give you a warning. And so that's, when, when we, we've put money aside for emphasis patrols, we've put money aside of our own for emphasis patrols. And emphasis patrols to me means that we're going to go out and we're going to hammer this, and if it's your lucky day that you came through there speeding, it's your lucky day that you get to come talk to a judge. And, and it's not a warning emphasis. If, if we want to give, school zones and, and construction zones are, there, there, there are things that the state has said we want to enforce, and, and there's different penalties for those. And so that's, that's my only concern is that basically we're calling it an emphasis because we're in the, we're pulling more people over in them, but we're not using it as an emphasis like we would if we were with Target Zero doing DUIs, if we were doing speeding or seat belts or any of that kind of stuff. And so I would like to see it be a true emphasis, and then we will, I think we will see the numbers drop drastically because school zone tickets, if I'm not mistaken, and, and this, this is the issue I think we have sometimes, is school zone tickets are not able to be diverted. So if you get a ticket in a school zone or a work zone, I don't think that you are able to come in and get that diverted. Or deferred, yeah.
Or pled down.
Or pled down. And so I think that's sometimes why we, ah, we don't want to write the ticket, but, but there's a reason why the state has made them that way, is because they're, they're zones of importance to the state, and they should be zones of importance to us. And so I, I hope that as we see these emphasis, you know, Mr. McCoy and I went on a DUI one, and we worked a lot of, a lot of time that night, and there was only seven, I think, countywide that night on that emphasis. And so there was a lot of people working to get those DUIs, and I don't think there was any. I, I will be willing to bet your paycheck, there was none that were let off that night. So that's what I'd like to see out of that if we can.
I do agree with that. As you know, it is beyond me that it took the city council to order the city to do it to begin with. You would think that that would just come naturally, but it, it didn't. And then for the police to have an education, we'll call it an education offensive, is offensive to me. It should be education with tuition. And if we can't do it in school zones, I'm not sure where we do it. So I would hope the city would pretty much order. I don't want us to turn into some little southern Georgian town where you're two over and we're writing you a ticket. But we've had notices of fifty and sixty. That, that deserves a ticket. If you were doing sixty in a, just see sixty in a twenty, that's three times. If you were doing that on the interstate, that means you were doing two hundred and ten. I believe the State Patrol would issue you a ticket if you could do two ten. So I agree with you, sir. I, I hope the city will just, some people, if you're two, three over, fine, here's your warning. Hope to not ever see you again. If you're twenty-two over, here's your warning with tuition. Tell it to the judge, please. Anyone else?
I think, I, I could be wrong, but I've got it twice, so I'm not. Anything twenty mile an hour over is excessive speed.
Criminal.
And so if you're rolling through a school zone at forty-two mile an hour, that's excessive speed. And so like when we got people rolling through at fifty and sixty, that's, that's borderline getting car towed and, you know.
Chest dived.
Yeah. So, so I think that that's, you know, we, but I think education, like, like the deputy mayor said, is important too, is putting that out there that like, hey, we're not, we're not putting up with this anymore. We've, we, we've got statistics that we can put out that say this is what's been going through our school zones, and we're not. In fact, when, when I did the emphasis for DUI, our officer that's going to be our traffic officer made a comment when they were doing an emphasis patrol, and should we give warnings? And he said, we already did. We told them we're doing the emphasis patrol. There's your warning. So, so if we tell you we're going to do it, you've been warned that we're doing it. If we pull you over, it's because we're going to talk to you about it now. And so I think that's something that, that, that we could do a little bit better job of putting it out there, saying, here's, you want a warning? Here it is. You know, tell all your family and friends. I've told every single one of them, and I've told the mayor, don't speed through a school zone now because you will get a ticket. So I think that, that that education is, is good.
Anyone else? Anything else?
That concludes administrative reports.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Council Communications, is there anyone? Yes, sir. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a few events and that I wanted, I just wrote down probably in the last, I want to say two, two and a half weeks. And I noticed every event I went to, there was this silly guy in a bow tie there. Yeah, I am. Legislative breakfast. Mayor was there. Councilmember Farrar was there, myself. We had two open houses for the chief. Many of us were there. We had another open house for the park. Mayor was there as a few council members. I think each of those is probably at least two hours each. So I think we're up, up to six now. We had a legislative dinner. Everybody was at another two hours. We, before the DUI emphasis patrol, there was the Night of a Thousand Stars, probably another two hours there. Councilmember Farrar was there as well. Mr. Bowman and I went on a, the ride along. Sergeant Canute was awesome. Please send my regards. It was very informative. If anybody's not done one, especially on an emphasis patrol, it was different than just a, a normal ride along. So for me, it was very informative. So call that another two hours. The, the belle of the ball at the senior luncheon is nobody else than our mayor. That thing is two hundred people were at that holiday dinner.
Yes, sir.
If you ever need a chance to volunteer in December, they always take extra servers. So let me know if you want to help on that. Additionally, there was a LCC networking event. I've done this just because they helped a foundation I worked with, so I try to give back to them. Our mayor was there and then also did a panel, so probably another two, three hours there.
Six.
Six hours. Okay, so we're at twenty now. That's my bad math. Sorry, Megan. I hope you're not tracking that. And finally, the last thing, I, I probably missed some stuff, but there was also the CAM grand opening. Councilmember Davis, myself, and the mayor were at that. That was probably another hour. He's not going to sit here and tell you how much time he spends, but he spends a lot of time for the city. So this ties an honor of you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm honored to see you wear it.
I'll never wear one again.
I'm honored to hear you say that because you just, you, you, you just don't do us justice.
Yeah, maybe another ten years. It's a, but there's big shoes to fill in this council, sir. Well done, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. A pleasure. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just to kind of pigtail on that, it has been a pleasure. We've been at this for twelve years. It, thinking about it the other day, you know, it, it seems like yesterday, and until, sometimes it seems like yesterday that we started. Sometimes it seems like forever, but you have definitely put the city first in, in, in my mind in all that you do. I know sometimes some people may not appreciate that, but, but, but you've always had that. You've always had that first and foremost and, and have always represented the city well. It does. It does take a lot of time, and, and those of us that have been in your position as mayor understand it, and that's why some of us chose never to do it again. And we appreciate you doing that and taking that on and, and, and making that commitment. I hope that, I hope Dolores finds something for you to do because I am sure that she's going to be ready for you to do something different than, than bug her and, yeah. But do appreciate it. It's been a pleasure being a colleague of yours for the last twelve years.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good riddance. No, I'm just kidding. No, thank you for all you've done for the community. We saw it tonight in those pictures. It's proof he does show up at every event. It's kind of annoying, but I was just kidding. I, I have to joke with them. So anyways, thank you so much for all the, all of your work for how many years? Twelve? And then you're one of the people that helped me get on council when you were mayor, so I appreciate that for the opportunity and keep in touch.
Will do. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I can echo with most employees tonight, but also providing a little perspective is now that you're leaving us, Mr. Bowman and myself will be the two most senior members of council, which is hard to believe. Mr. Mayor, we knew myself and Mr. Bowman thought of council at the same time, and early on you and I locked horns.
That's correct.
And then I grew up a little bit, and I started to learn about you, to know who you are, what makes you tick. I started to see the human suffering. And I know that if I needed something at one o'clock in the morning, I called you, I know you would be, you were that kind of person.
Thank you.
And so we truly care about our community, care about those people, and care about the work that needs to go in to make that a reality. And so I appreciate you, and I hope that this is part of lots of this year.
Thank you. That's more than kind. Well, let, let me, if I may, sixteen years ago, I walked to my mailbox and there was a man sitting by a fire hydrant. Paint all over him. He, he was a wonderful man. He was a terrible painter. The city's truck looked like hell because he just couldn't get the paint back into the truck properly. And as I'm walking to my mailbox, he stops and, and he starts talking to me. And one hour and fifteen minutes, thirty minutes later, he releases me. And I think about, wow, does the city know its employee sits there and paints a fire hydrant for an hour and a half? My head, of course, was burnt from the sun, and I met Mr. Ganley. And Mr. Ganley, to me, was Battleground. I was there when he passed away. I held his hand. A day I'll never forget. And so let me say God bless Bill, because for better or for worse, he and my wife Dolores got me started on this way. It has been a hell of a ride. I do want to thank the people Battleground for having faith in me over the last twelve years to occupy this chair. Though I sit in this chair, I do recognize it is only temporarily held by me, and come the new year, Mr. Overholzer will be the temporary occupant until the day someone else takes the chair from him. That's the way the city and for that matter, the country runs. Congratulations, sir. I look forward to you in January taking the chair. Twelve years ago, when Mr. Bowman, Cortez, and Mr. Cortez and I got here, things didn't look good. One of the first things we voted on was jettisoning the food bank off the budget because we needed fifty grand. When it comes down to cutting off the food bank, that is a hard vote. It was a hard vote. If you remember, Mr. Roman, Mr. Cortez, things weren't good. There literally was too much month at the end of our money. We had new buildings with mortgages, a skate parked with a mortgage, and a lot of water, sewer, and road maintenance that was put off, but we survived. There were a lot of folks coming and going during that time. We grew, we shrank, and now we're growing again with employees. Seems to be the way of municipal government. We've done a lot of things well, and along, along with that, there have been some things that were not so well done. We have our water squared away until the mid twenty thirties, including the projected growth. We have a sewer plan that takes us into the mid twenty thirties. It's expensive, but we're on it. We have a plan on better road maintenance, and perhaps sometimes in the future, sometime in the future, we'll have a better funding mechanism for the roads. There's a park plan that hinges on whether all the folks who told us better parks were a must, we're depending on them to decide that they wish to pay for. I hope they do. There's the Veterans Memorial that the city said would never be built. It was too expensive. It is the only one in its, of its kind in the county. Quarter of a million dollars of donated materials and labor went into it. We owe quite a debt to, to those folks that built it. It comes with its own maintenance funding mechanism to cover its costs, so the people aren't responsible. We've settled all our mortgages on all our facilities and only have a few low-interest loans on utility services. There's not a city in the county that can say that. Now a few problems. We're bisected by state highways, which means we are under the thumb of Washdott, and they do not seem to be in any type of hurry to do anything. Their lack of action has cost the city over the years a ton of money, and I think we, that that will continue for years to come. Hopefully, they'll recognize us as a partner someday and not just some city on one of their roads. Being so far off the interstate has cost us business opportunities, but I think that as land gets squeezed to the west and south of us, our fortunes should get better. Now for a few things to get off my chest. I do understand that no one likes a politician and it is great sport in this country to banter about how corrupt we are along with our city employees. Let me say with great faith, there is not one soul on this dais or one employee in our employment that is for sale and or is offering favors. If there is, and someone has proof, then please bring it forward, for it will not be tolerated. One of our most recent problems has been the lack of flying the Christmas banner. I understand the nostalgia behind it. I've been getting quite a few comments and complaints about our inability to hoist it up this year. Let me apologize for that, and I do believe that this time next year it should be with a little Christmas magic above Main Street. Having said that, if the lack of the banner has dampened your Christmas spirit, along with what some say is a pathetic Christmas pole banner program, then I would suggest that you look back in your life and try to remember when Christmas didn't depend on city furnished stimuli, but what was shared between your families and friends, that's what I tried to do. Let's talk about growth. Battleground is a city. Cities since the beginning of time either grow or fade away. It is not nineteen eighty-three, nineteen ninety-three, two thousand three, or two thousand thirteen. It is twenty twenty-three, and folks from around the country are moving in. I understand those who have deep roots find it hard to believe what has happened here over the years, but a country of three hundred and fifty million needs homes, and we are no different. I think the state has plans for us to take another seventy-five hundred to eight thousand people in the next ten years, and those plans have already started. And those plans have already started. If you don't care for the state's idea, then may I suggest that you and your friends show up at various meetings that will be held in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five and express your thoughts. I will say for all the angst of the city council allowing this building to go on, that the council hasn't signed off on one subdivision since twenty seventeen. It has gone to a hearings examiner whose only mission is to make sure that I's are dotted and T's are crossed. This puts an end to any discussion of political influence brought and paid for by the developers with the council. I will say there is a way for the people to put a stop to growth. It's very cynical and very expensive for the public. And that is quit selling your land to developers. That's a very big ask for someone's parents, grandparents or themselves to take one for the team. But the city cannot stop someone from building a development on a piece of ground that can be used for that purpose. Doing so means the development still gets built and the taxpayers after being sued will pay for it. Finally, let me address being on the council. It is the easiest job I've ever had. There is no forced marching in lowest bidder boots. There's no heavy rucksack, no weapon toting. It really has been an easy job. All I had to do was to tell the folks what I hope, plan to do, try my best to do it and report back to them my accomplishments or lack therein. Then do it again twice over twelve years. What this means to me is that one shows up for various meetings, reads the materials and asks pertinent questions of the various people that come before us. This is a team effort. There are tons of meetings inside the city, inside the county, in Olympia, along with a slew of other locations. If one or more doesn't participate for whatever reason, then not only the city suffers, but the people themselves are denied their full voice that they gave to each one of us to express on their behalf. It is an easy job, but it is a job that requires both time, dedication and a cost to one's personal and professional life. But I'm sure all of you knew that before you ran for office. I wish you the best. I will take a moment to uh, to thank the city employees. Over the twelve years I've been here, they have backed me. Yes, I have railed against some of them. Probably most all of them over the twelve years. But I did it on behalf of what I thought the people deserved. I'd like to thank Mr. Herzeg. Mr. Herzeg has done me a wonderful, done the city a wonderful job in the twelve years I've been here. Ms. Lowery, there have been two uh, finance people before you. I will say you are the best. Mr. Ferrier, yes, you've only been here for ten months. You're a good sport because I have uh, I, as we would say back home, I have ridden you like a uh, rented mule occasionally. And you, sir, are up for it. I wish you the best as well. Mr. Crumpet, Crump, Crumpet. I did the same thing. Mr. Crummett the same. Let me say to you, Ms. Erwin. Ms. Erwin, when I got here, I started attending meetings sixteen years ago. The largest meeting I've ever attended was uh, they were firing the police chief. The place was stacked. I used to sit right over in the corner with a, a blind uh, man named Art. He and I were a team. I would explain to him the scene and then he would listen. And in that night, it was incredible. Uh, so incredible in the fact that uh, they, not only did they fire the police chief, they fired the city manager at the same time. And uh, at that point, if um, I know Mr. Cortez, Mr. Bowman remembers, I took an ad in the paper because they, they allowed the fired city manager to work from home for a while and, and I took an ad out stating that if you wanted to make ten thousand dollars a month, apply for the battleground city manager's job because you can work from home and make ten grand. And so Mr. Williams came and now you're here. I appreciate you're here. It is a hard job. Working for seven people cannot be easy. I uh, speak from experience on that for, in the army, I worked for quite a few folks above me that, that were uh, unkind at best. And I'm not saying we're unkind. We expect and I think you deliver what the people of the city need. And so ma'am, tonight, let me say to you, it has been my pleasure and I wish you the best. On that note, the next meeting when Mr. Overholzer will be in this chair is Tuesday, January second. There is no study session scheduled, so the regular meeting starts at seven o'clock. They'll see you then.